All right. Good evening, everybody. Let me welcome you to the regular meeting of the Daily City Council this Monday, March 13, 2023. To watch the live telecast, please go on YouTube slash Daily City Video Meetings or on www.dailycity.org/Agendas. For public participation, there are two ways to submit public comment. One, by written comments by the meeting day, and secondly, to attend the meeting in person. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could we all please rise and say the pledge to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. De Giovanni?
Present.
Dr. Rod? Ms. Manalo?
I'm present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
I am present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dr. Rod would like to apologize for not being here today. He's apparently out sick. And Ms. Manalo is also ill, so she's attending remotely. All right. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming. Let me start out with presentations under item number one, which is the Fiscal Year End 2020 Review. Mr. Nevin, good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. Tonight, we will review the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Thank you. In addition to reviewing the fiscal year end, we will also look closely at the impact that the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, had on the results for 2022. And lastly, we will review the first full year of actual revenues and expenditures for Measure Q. This chart shows general fund revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2022 and the adopted budget for fiscal year 2023. The first column on the left shows the adopted budget for 2022, with over $110 million in revenues and over $120 million in expenditures, resulting in a budgeted deficit of almost $10 million. Reserves would have decreased to just under $36 million, which is equivalent to four months of reserves. After closing the accounting books for fiscal year 2022, actual revenues were $117.5 million, almost $7 million higher than budgeted. Actual expenditures were $109 million. The difference between budgeted expenditures and actual expenditures is the result of more than $12.5 million in salary savings from vacant positions. So with actual revenues and expenditures coming in where they did, the general fund experienced an $8.2 million surplus. As a result, reserves increased to $53.8 million, equivalent to six months of reserves. The last column on the right shows the budget for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2023, that was adopted last June. There was a budgeted $2.5 million deficit. And for your consideration this evening, on the consent agenda are fiscal year 2023 mid-year budget adjustments, mainly consisting of salary and benefit increases for the bargaining units resulting from labor negotiations. Total general fund budgeted expenditures would increase by almost $4.5 million. Therefore, the budgeted deficit for fiscal year 2023 would increase to approximately $7 million. This chart shows a history of actual results for the last three fiscal years: a $7.5 million surplus in 2020, a $7.7 million deficit in 2021, the first actual general fund deficit in a decade, and an $8.2 million surplus in 2022. One major item I wanted to point out on this slide is related to our general fund reserve level. In fiscal year 2020, the $7.5 million surplus resulted in reserves of $53.25 million. Compared with actual expenditures of $90.7 million, this is equivalent to seven months of reserves. After the $7.7 million deficit in 2021 and the $8.2 million surplus in 2022, reserves are $53.8 million, only slightly higher than reserves at the end of 2020. However, when you compare the $53.8 million reserve level in 2022 with actual expenditures of $109.3 million, this equates to only six months of reserves as compared to seven months of reserves at the end of 2020. My point in looking closely at this shows that reserves need to continue to increase over time in order to maintain healthy reserve levels in dollar amounts, but especially in terms of months of reserves. Because actual expenditures increased in those three fiscal years from $90.7 million in 2020 to $103.8 million in 2021 to $109.3 million in 2022, the reserve level in months decreased from seven months of reserves to six months of reserves, while the dollar amount in reserves is roughly the same in those two years. $53 million in reserves bought the city seven months of operating expenditures in 2020, but only six months in 2022. The increasing level of expenditures from fiscal years 2020 to 2022 is mainly due to our largest expenditure, the salaries and benefits of our workforce. This chart shows the approved budget for fiscal year 2022 versus the actual year-end results. We pulled out ARPA revenues to show that without the $8.5 million of ARPA funds that the city utilized in fiscal year 2022, we would have ended the year with a small deficit. One-time ARPA funds enabled the general fund to have an $8.2 million surplus. We will continue to utilize one-time ARPA funds over the next few fiscal years. Then, the one-time federal money will go away. We look forward to applying for and hopefully receiving some federal infrastructure funding in the coming years, and we will keep you updated on the city's efforts in this regard. Before we move on to discuss one-time ARPA funds in more detail, we will take a brief look at the enterprise funds. The Water Fund had a budgeted surplus of just over $1 million and ended the year with an actual surplus of $9 million. Revenues were slightly better than budgeted, and expenditures were less than budgeted, resulting in the surplus. There was also the benefit of a $2.8 million pension liability accounting adjustment that increased the surplus. The Sanitation Fund had a budgeted deficit of $3.7 million and ended the year with a surplus of $6.7 million. Revenues were slightly lower than budgeted, and similarly, expenditures were less than budgeted. There was also the benefit of a fairly large pension liability accounting adjustment of almost $8.7 million that resulted in the surplus. The favorable pension liability accounting adjustment was the result of the large investment gain that CalPERS experienced in 2021. GovInvest Senior Consultant Iris Summer presented those results at a city council meeting last year. CalPERS experienced an almost equivalent negative investment result in 2022, which will result in unfavorable pension liability accounting adjustments on the city's books for this fiscal year 2023. CalPERS' negative investment results affect the general fund as well, and we will discuss this in more detail in future budget study sessions. ARPA. The city received $25.26 million in one-time ARPA funding. The original appropriation of ARPA funds was made by this council in November 2021. ARPA funds were appropriated for items bulleted here, including premium pay for full-time and hourly employees, revenue loss replacement, COVID-19 mitigation costs, legal aid, immigrant relief, small business assistance, library technology, childcare center early learning program, community Wi-Fi broadband projects, and various public health and stormwater projects. In fiscal year 2022, the city utilized $8.5 million of ARPA funds in the general fund and $1.2 million in various other funds. This chart shows a breakdown of the $8.5 million of utilized ARPA funds in the general fund for fiscal year 2022. There are more funds to be utilized in the general fund over the next few fiscal years. This chart shows a breakdown of the $1.2 million of utilized ARPA funds in various other funds for fiscal year 2022. More ARPA funds will be utilized in the coming years as well. For example, the concept of the new childcare facility was just approved at a recent council meeting, in addition to partial funding for a new well. Now, we will look at the first full fiscal year of Measure Q revenues and expenditures. The adopted revenue budget for Measure Q was $7.532 million, and the actual revenues were $8.32 million. Six Measure Q programs were approved, and a budget was adopted for each program. Those programs include the reinstatement of Fire Engine 95, police body worn and patrol vehicle cameras, the Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team Pilot Program, additional library staffing, additions to recreation and senior programming, and a pilot restorative justice program. Expenditures were budgeted at $4.966 million, and actual expenditures were almost $3.37 million. The difference between the actual Measure Q revenues and expenditures helped maintain current city services. A breakdown of the $3.37 million in actual Measure Q expenditure shows where the funds were spent. Measure Q funded body worn and patrol vehicle cameras, Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team Pilot Program, the addition of nine FIRE FTE to restore Engine 95, the addition of four library FTE that provided an additional 20 service hours to the Bay Shore Library, and 16 service hours to the John Daly Library, the addition of four recreation FTE to provide senior programming citywide, including the senior lunch program and other services, supplies for senior programs at community centers, an update to tables and chairs at senior serving centers, and transforming a classroom into a food pantry for seniors. The next steps regarding the budget are fiscal year 2023 mid-year budget adjustments, which again are on the consent agenda this evening, budget study sessions for fiscal years 2024 and '25 later this spring, and the adoption of the fiscal years 2024 and 2025 operating and capital budgets in June. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nevin. Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you for the clarification on a lot of this I see here. So currently, then, I believe we said we'd like to stay at a 17% for our reserves? Isn't that what we voted for? And what percentage is that? Are we at now 15%?
In terms of percentages, we-
Since we went down a month?
Talked about a targeted reserve level of three months, but then wanting a higher reserve level in that. But the reserve level that I showed in terms of months, and I'll go back, is showing where we've been in the last three fiscal years, so ending 2020, seven months of reserves, with the deficit in 2021 down to five months of reserves, and then with the $8.2 million surplus last fiscal year 2022, the reserve level in months going back up to six months, which is our latest level of reserves, ending June 30, 2022.
So in anticipation with that, as we can see where the COVID came, and then how the ARPA funds came in, and then how you try and we put that in there into the, I see that. And then the expenditures obviously are going to be more during that time as well, Mr. Nevin, understandably, right? During the COVID, the unexpected.
We did have some COVID expenditures, that's true, in fiscal year 2021. But again, most of the increases for each of the fiscal years is mainly related to the salaries and benefits of staff, our largest expenditure in the city. But yes, there was definitely some one-time funds that we had to expend for.
And so as far as the pension liability, so you're saying that on the status of that is pretty, you know, still have a long ways to go?
Our pension liability does fluctuate with how CalPERS does in their investments. And in good years, we see positive adjustments for our pension liability, and we see our long-term curves in terms of what we're going to owe CalPERS. We see those come down when they have a good investment return. And as I mentioned, the investment, good investment return last year was, the next year had a negative investment return. So we'll see the curves go back to sort of where they were prior to that.
And how does our bond situation, when that is finished, how will that affect on our pension liabilities?
Well, they're unrelated, but that will be good when we have our pension obligation bonds that will finish paying off in 2024. So that will be, that'll be good for the city to be done with that 20-year obligation we've had.
And then, you know, as we go forward, as you said, when we do the other presentations going forward, we'll be able to talk about CalTrust and that, because that was something different that we had done, I think, last year, wasn't it?
We have, we have a few pension and UAL savings accounts, basically. One in PARS, and we're looking at another one with CalPERS.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then I know that we, like you said, then we are still understaffed in most departments. So we have to figure that all that out as well. That's what I got from before, correct? We're still understaffed.
And we will be looking at various staffing levels in budget sessions for the next two-year budget cycle.
Because there'll still be a wave coming of retirements. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Can I ask, Mr. Nevin? So the reserve in months, I see you stated what the numerical dollar amount for seven, five, six, and five. If you were to take it all the way down to three months, what would the numerical value look like in dollars?
If I were to, I'm sorry?
So you said in your chart, five, five months in reserve is $51,224, right?
Was that related to this slide that I have on, or is it the?
Yeah. Yeah, that one.
So at the end of?
If you were to take it to three months, what would that look like?
Oh, I see. Okay. So the, so if we look at the numbers on this slide and we look at fiscal 2022, because that's our latest number, our latest actual figure. So if we just take round numbers and say we have a reserve of 50 million, let's say, and expenditures of 100 million, that would be, our reserves would be at 50% of our operating expenditures. So we would be at six months of reserves, half the year. We could technically go half a year without receiving revenue in a horrible economy and still be able to pay salaries and benefits for employees. If our reserves were to decrease, let's say, to $25 million, that would represent roughly three months of reserves. Yeah. So if our reserves were to decrease by half, we would have, we would go from six months to three months of reserves.
Okay. And then also, so do we have anything by way of accounts or holdings with Silicon Valley Bank?
No.
Not at all? Any of our investments or any of our accounts?
We do not.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thanks for your report. Really good.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on to, yes?
Just one quick, I guess we can ask this later. And when we do our investments, most of our investments, as we know, they're not with fossil fuels or anything, are they? Someone asked me that, correct?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nevin. Great job.
Actually, let me ask, Ms. Manalo, did you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to Director Nevin on the comprehensive mid-year budget review. It looks like from your presentation, at least we're not in a place where we have two or three months in reserves. We actually have more. And I think that that looks like we're on a healthy trend, hopefully, as we see and progress down the line. My, I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to our retreat and speaking on the budget priorities this forthcoming. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Manalo.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to, in response to the Vice Mayor's comments and also your question, if we look at the fiscal year 2023 adopted column on the far right, we had budgeted a $2.5 million deficit last June, and tonight, we're adding mid-year budget adjustments for 2023 based on our completed negotiations with most of the bargaining units in the city. We're going to be, we're requesting about $4.5 million to be added to the expenditure budget. If we look at this, we show a budgeted deficit of $2.5 million. The mid-year adjustments will add another $4.5 million to that number, so that would be $7 million. That's a budgeted deficit, not an actual deficit, but that number would equate to four and a half months of reserves.
Four and a half months. Okay. All right. Got it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nevin. Let's go on to approval of the minutes of the February 27, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I do have some edits, if I may.
Go ahead.
On the city council reports, I just wanted to ensure that in the minutes when I acknowledge Opal, it was also acknowledging Leslie.
Opal and Leslie. Okay. Anything else?
No. Thank you.
Any other modifications from any of the other council members? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes as modified?
Motion to approve.
Second? Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objection? Hearing none. Those minutes are approved.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into the approval of the agenda, I do have a request. If possible, staff would recommend that we pull item number five from the agenda altogether, and we are not ready to proceed at this time, and we will be putting it back on the agenda when we are ready.
Okay. Sounds good. Item number five then is pulled, so we just approved the remaining items in the agenda. Can I get a motion to do that?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none. Those items are approved. Okay. Let's go on to public appearances or communications. Do we have any speaker cards, Madam City Clerk? No? Anything on by email or a letter? Nothing? All right. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Ms. De Giovanni, you wanted to pull an item?
Yes. If Mr. Nevin doesn't mind, the correlation on item number six?
Number six. All right. That's one. Ms. Manalo, did you have an item?
No item, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. So number six. Mr. Sylvester, do you have any items?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So with the exception of item number six, can I get a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Glenn Sylvester.
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any objection? Hearing none. Those items are all approved, except for number six. Let's go to number six, which is accept the fiscal year 2023 mid-year budget adjustments. Go ahead.
Thank you. It is recommended that the city council approve fiscal year 2023 mid-year revenue and expenditure budget adjustments. The fiscal year 2023 operating and capital budgets were adopted by the city council on June 13, 2022. The fiscal year 2023 mid-year budget review is an opportunity for staff to recommend budget adjustments to reflect changes in revenue and expenditure estimates based on performance through the first half of fiscal year 2023. After review of financial activity from July 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, staff identified some needs for budget adjustments as summarized in Attachment A. Staff is recommending an increase in general fund budget expenditures by a total of $4,448,572, which includes increases of $4.36 million to salaries and benefits from approved MOUs as a result of labor negotiations. No adjustments to general fund revenues are recommended. The $4.448 million represents 3.7% of the current general fund budget of just over $120 million. Staff recommends adjustments to expenditures in other non-general fund budgets that equate to approximately $1,153,158. This includes increases of $746,000 for salaries and benefits due to approved MOUs as a result of labor negotiations. Proposed adjustments in revenues and non-general fund budgets equate to an increase of $108,000 in the Water Fund from receipts from other agencies. Fiscal year 2023 general fund budget expenditures will increase by close to $4.5 million, while revenues will remain as originally budgeted. Fiscal year 2023 other city funds will see an overall increase in budgeted revenues of $108,000 and an increase in budgeted expenditures of just over $1.1 million. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution to approve the recommended budget adjustments for fiscal year 2023 as outlined in Attachment A, and staff is available to provide any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nevin. Go ahead, Ms. De Giovanni.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nevin, first, thank you for this. So how it correlates with the budget that you just showed us? I think you already did make the statement about the labor groups and how that's reflected in the, this is what we're really talking about, that's the majority of the money. And then I know we have one outstanding group. So where will that show up at? Whenever that, since it hasn't occurred?
As you mentioned, the labor groups that council have approved the contracts for, that is the dollar amount represented in this evening's mid-year adjustments. If by chance, there's one last group that's still bargaining, that could easily be absorbed into the budget from salary savings.
Okay. So that's just reflective of this? Okay. Got it. And as we go forward?
The, just on the general fund side, for example, 98% of the mid-year budget adjustments are only salaries and benefits related to bargaining.
Our labor and all the other ones, we gave 4% as well?
Correct.
Right? With our executive management?
Correct.
Okay. So then, they're all taken care of, all the salaries and everyone in the city is taken care of? That's important. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Nevin.
Hearing none. Can we get a motion to approve item number six?
Motion to approve item number six.
Glenn Sylvester, second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So that item is approved. Thank you, Mr. Nevin.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go on to public hearings, number nine, which is the Public Hearing on Removal of- which is the public hearing on removal of commercial vehicle parking on the east side of Bay Shore Boulevard. Mr. Chu, Director Chu.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. For this item, I'm going to turn the presentation over to our senior civil engineer, Shirley Chan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, we're talking about the removal of the commercial vehicle parking zone on the east side of Bay Shore Boulevard. When the commercial vehicle parking program was first established, included an 800-foot commercial vehicle parking zone on the east side of Bay Shore Boulevard, just north of Geneva Avenue. In 2015, Resolution 1543, it designated a 965-foot no-parking zone in approximately the same area on the east side of Bay Shore Boulevard. The no-parking zone was needed to prevent overflow parking from the San Francisco Municipal Transportation Agency's auto return site. At the January 9 meeting, City Council set February 13 as the date for a public hearing regarding the removal of the commercial vehicle parking on Bay Shore Boulevard. At the February 13 meeting, the item was continued to March 13. Notices of public hearing were published in a newspaper on the city's website and were mailed directly to all commercial vehicle parking permit holders in mid-February. Staff recommends that the City Council hold a public hearing and approve a resolution to revise the commercial vehicle parking zone, removing the 800-foot commercial vehicle parking zone on the east side of Bay Shore Boulevard. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing no questions. Can I, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do you have any speaker cards on this, Madam City Clerk? Great. Any letters or emails? All right, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, any further discussion? If not, can I get a motion to adopt the resolution by roll call?
Motion to adopt resolution.
You got a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. D'Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Mr. Bento Ventura?
Aye. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
May I make a quick comment? This probably doesn't pertain to what we just voted on, but I just wonder if we can get something agendized for Gellert Boulevard across from the Chinese Cemetery. There's a whole bunch of trucks that parks there all the time, which brings upon additional services for the city, especially in the area of sanitation. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm requested maybe perhaps a look at that to see if that can be agendized for sometime in the future.
Okay. All right, let's go on to appointments. Board commission and membership committee appointments, any appointments? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, actually, I think it'd probably be this slot. It saddens me to say that Mr. Crump had to resign from the Planning Commission. So that does leave a spot open for the Planning Commission. And I just wanted to tell anyone in the public, in the community, that if you are interested in serving on our wonderful Planning Commission and serving and volunteering in our city, then please contact me. And I'm looking forward to hopefully appointing someone to, and then with our council's approval, at the next meeting. So please contact me at your earliest convenience, and then we'll guide you through it, or the City Clerk's office. They'll be happy to take you through it. And this is open to anyone in our community if you would like to serve. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Let's go on to other appointments. Any other appointments? Hearing none. Let's go on to council committee reports, starting with the development committee meeting. Who would like to speak up on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the development committee meeting with Councilmember Das Magwell, there were two items in particular, the Seufi driving site. Staff had broached their idea for a battery storage in that particular site. You know, given the Bay Shore community and their needs pretty consistently around having more potential food options and grocery stores. You know, I think this will come to the full council, but my colleague and I do see another opportunity versus battery storage in that area. But also wanted to report back that also Midway Village 2 is underway, as well as an update on all of the residential and commercial developments that are in the pipeline from staff, Director Tatum, and also with Michael, providing us that information at that committee meeting. And so it looks like there are some exciting things down the line. For instance, at the St. Francis area, there is a seafood city potentially for rehabilitating the whole area, fixing up the parking lots in that respect. And so those are some of the exciting things that we see around our economic development.
All right, thank you, Ms. Manalo.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, let's move on to the CDBG Advisory Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the CDBG committee meeting, I had that meeting also with Councilmember Das Magwell. I want to say thank you to Lanell for the outstanding work as well with Betsy. This was a synopsis of CDBG allocations forthcoming. And for our approval, all of the organizations that applied actually is receiving support for us. And let me just pull that up for everyone to... You do a really outstanding job. You talked about the, both CDBG and the home funds. And so with the home funds allocation is really to make sure that there is a maintenance and an improvement of housing stock. As we all know, we need the increase in supply of affordable housing, also preserving housing affordability. Along with that, public services is so important, economic development, and also maintaining and providing public facilities. And so the the applications received for the CDBG allocation recommendations is, of course, there is allocation for general administration of the funds. And then there is Project Sentinel, Fair Housing, our capital project, which we approved for the early learning childcare center around economic development, a nonprofit called Renaissance Entrepreneurship. And within housing, rebuilding together and safe at home. Also CID Housing Accessibility and Modification, HAM program. Also Habitat for Humanity Residential Rehab and City Housing Rehab. As far as public services, Life Moves and Family Crossroads and the Peninsula Family Service Organization and Project REIT. And so that is the CDBG allocation recommendations from staff, which we, both colleague and I, agreed on the recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Manalo. Let's go on to the Design Review Committee meeting, St. Francis Square.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that's me again with, that is with Councilmember Das Magwell. That's a very busy, busy week. And so with the design review for St. Francis Square, I just want to say thank you to the staff, Michael and Tatum, and for also City Manager Picaletti. In regards to the design review meeting, it was just talking about the materiality, the colors, and the design of St. Francis Square with repaving the parking. As we all know, we've seen the parking structure there. It needs a lot of repaving. And then also, you know, the opportunity for the new Seafood City Market, in which they really took into the consideration the neighborhood as far as their design, because the facade of Seafood City kind of looks like it has like, it looks like a house, I would say, as far as its outward facade. And then some of the questions that we had were, those are an opportunity to provide, you know, cultural markers within the square. And the one portion of the site is basically just a large wall. The request was to see if there could be a mural that was, so that would break up kind of just the mundane gray wall. Seafood City said that they would be open to a mural in that location. And I think that is it. I know there's some additions that staff had as well.
That's a great idea about that mural. I think that's wonderful to, for Seafood City, to consider that. My question is, do you, what do you know? Or if there's anything, have there been any discussions on retaining some of those existing stores or restaurants or tenants there? And do you know anything about that?
There are long-term leases with some of the tenants on site. So they will be returning. I'm going to have to ask staff if they remember. I think it was, was it the Hot Pot?
Oh, okay.
Place? And then also the, I think cigarette store or liquor store? I'm just recalling from our meeting. And then?
I think Tatum is here.
The laundromat. Was that, those are the three?
I think Tatum is here to...
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Tatum.
I don't recall the specific ones, but yes, there are a variety of them that have the long-term leases that they will maintain the lease and move them around accordingly. And then a lot of them had shorter-term leases, but they did express an interest in keeping those tenants, but they will have to kind of move out for a while as the remodeling takes place. But they did express an interest in wanting to keep even the short-term tenants.
You know, Valerios was one of them?
I, they did, I don't recall Valerios as one of the long-term ones, so that's probably one of the shorter-term ones, yeah. But I do know that they're a local favorite, so...
And a Burma Cafe as well, right?
That one does not have a long-term lease either.
It does not either.
Yeah.
And what happens to them economically if, when they have to move out short-term? Even the ones that the mayor asked about?
Right, so basically, they do have to move out for some time. So they are given, I think actually Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Manalo, expressed an interest in giving them a longer notice, although most of them are already aware about what's going to happen. So they make adjustments into their business plan.
Maybe there's grants out there for them or something, something to sustain them, Mayor?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. All right, how about the Affordable Housing Committee meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With Affordable Housing meeting, I will yield to Councilmember Sylvester. It was both of us. I feel like I've been talking straight for how many committees? And so I'll give the opportunity to Councilmember Sylvester to speak on, and I'll add any information.
Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak on this meeting that we had with Ms. Mother's Head, Ms. O'Bell, and Ms. Lanell. You know, it was a very interesting meeting that really, if it wasn't for the information given to us by the other folks, it would really be hard to comprehend what's going on. What was most important to me is the Bay Bay Area. There's an amendment back in 1944 talking about the California welfare tax exemption. And there are some requirements. Developers have to provide low-income housing to be qualified to a minimum of 51% of the entire residential units within the location. And I'm going to take Westlake Apartments as one. If you all don't know, Westlake Village Apartments was just sold. And as it is, the city obtains a certain amount of funds from property taxes. And a place like Westlake Village, where it could have been purchased a long time ago, I don't have the specifics, but to the tune of $1 billion. So to calculate the property taxes on $1 billion, I think it's 1.14%. The Daly City does not get all of that. Daly City, and in most cases, in all property taxes, only gets a certain portion. Well, under this act, if a developer wants to provide 51% of residential units, the back end of that is they would absolve themselves from having to pay property taxes. That's a lot of money. So there's a collaboration, number one, going on with many cities throughout San Mateo County, because what works in Daly City for low income may not work for other, it may not work in Daly City, but it works elsewhere. Just to give you an example, San Francisco HUD, the metro area median income for family income is $166,000. So affordability for rent for a one-bedroom is $2,700. But for Daly City, the median family income is only $99,000. So subsequently, 80% AMI would be $1,600. So where do we go? Do we say we're going to not have these developers pay property taxes? And yet, at the same time, work with the area median income, which would not really benefit Daly City, because our area median income is much lower? So if you're saying you're offering 51% low income, but folks in Daly City cannot afford it, we have to look at both sides to the coin to see what is best for Daly City. So that's what stood out to me during this meeting in the highest priority. So I kind of, Vice Mayor and I left it with that. Staff is going to continue to look to see what would be feasible, taking in all the developers and see if it would be feasible for our city. That's all I have. Vice Mayor, if I may have forgotten something, please chime in.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Yeah, I think when you talk about the Bafa welfare tax exemption, given the fact that 80% AMI is quite different from what an 80% AMI in Redwood City would be versus what are 80% AMI in Daly City is. And so I think that really our priority in affordable housing is ensuring that we retain and ensure that the housing opportunities are affordable. And so I think that it's something that we, that Bafa welfare tax exemption at this juncture... At this juncture would not serve the community that uh, we have in Daly City. And then we also talked about. Um, looking at our inclusionary housing uh, policies. Um, given that the fact that it's, it's, it is time for us to look at our uh, BMR policies. Uh, but given the market and where it's at right now, I think that um, you know, there is an opportunity to. Work with other jurisdictions um, in uh, working to find out. Like a next study and, and this time and age, but not necessarily in the near future, but I think. Maybe further in maybe eight months down the line. I think there's uh, doing it now wouldn't serve us as um, what we would need, given that there's really a shift in. The housing market as we can all see. Um, and so with that. Um, the opportunity to join in with other jurisdictions in, in analysis. Of um, you know, what would be kind of the right uh, amount of BMR units. Um, you know, the question I did make sure uh, with staff is that, you know, we, we are a, a unique. Um, also um, location and uh, you know, bedroom community and so. When they do the analysis, I want to make sure that it's also reflective of. Um, our Daly City community and um, the different uh, data points that we need. Uh, to assess, given that we are a bedroom community, given that. Um, you know, our economic drivers come from. Uh, retail restaurants and auto and uh, versus um, the other cities uh, surrounding us.
Mayor, may I ask?
Ms. Manella, go ahead, Ms. DeGiovanni.
Uh, to the Vice Mayor and the Committee Members of Sylvester. Um, so I know that the investors that purchased Westlake, the Dubai and with other. Uh, people that, that so far the notices went out that there will not be any changes. So I, what, what I was gonna ask is, because the average of even the studios are twenty-one hundred to twenty-three hundred. So I was gonna ask if, is there something on the books as well? As for history or in our city, that they are, will not be allowed to sell it as condominiums? Would either one of you happen to know that, either one of you? And would you look into that? Take, in order to uh, retain the people in our city when you're looking into. Uh, keeping our diversity, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Sylvester. Um, because we don't know what kind of changes they're gonna do. But um, so far it's supposed to stay the same, but anything can change. And um, I was told that there, there was some kind of regulation. In the city that they could not take them and use them and make them condominiums to sell. Not sure, but thank you. I would like, appreciate it. Thank you for looking into that.
No, thank you, Councilmember DeGiovanni. I do want to make it clear that it was the Vice Mayor and, and myself. Top priority is to increase housing stock in any way we can. And at the same time, we want to ensure that folks currently in housing. Uh, are not subject to such an increase that they can no longer uh, move out. I mean, have to move out, but to answer your question, I'm not that well-versed as to uh, um. What the um, conditions, covenants or restrictions. I would have to defer to Ms. Tatum or Betsy. Maybe they can perhaps answer that question. Restrictions on uh, converting to condominiums. Uh, this was Westlake Village Apartments.
I'll take it.
Oh, who, who said that?
I'll take it. I'll take it.
Oh, it's just a comment. Okay, I.
Um, the city does have a process for condominium conversions. It's, it's its own process. It um, would come under the Subdivision MAP Act, but there are protections. For existing tenants and, and offering them first right of refusal, refusal on units and other relocation efforts. But it's a, a condominium conversion is actually a pretty significant undertaking.
Yeah.
Both um, just in terms of process, but also in, in preparing a building for such a. Um, such an activity, so condominiums have different building code requirements versus apartments that were built. In the fifties or sixties or forties. So there'd be significant um.
Right.
Uh, capital improvements that would need to be made, but any condominium conversion would certainly come before.
Right. And plus they, I know that they indicated that they were in, not interested at this time to even change anything. Cause they do know that it would make a lot of people homeless if that, if that was to occur. So I did, uh, the, they did express to the residents, which I thought was really good. Because they, the people that live there are just working people and try to work two or three jobs, so that's sensitive as well. And they're not trying, trying to treat Daly City because they also purchased something in Los Angeles. So um, just heads up on to Vice Mayor and Councilmember Sylvester and thank you. Thank you for looking into that and thank you both for the committee.
Okay. All right, let's move on to City Council Reports. Any City Council Reports?
Uh, Mayor, I do have a City Council Report. I forgot to report on this at the last. Uh, uh, City Council Meeting that I did attend the Colma. Um, Daly City Chamber of Commerce Event at uh, Cal Palace. Um, and it was really um, an opportunity for businesses around the area to. Table and highlight their services. Um, and really also um, see the Cal Palace and. Um, and given that there's new leadership as the Executive Director and. Um, there's also new leadership on the Board of Directors for the Cal Palace. Um, it was a well-attended event and um, you know, they also provided tours. For those that wanted to see um, you know, the Cal Palace. Um, and they're really looking to igniting more events um, at that venue. And then um, also just uh, wanted to remind, remind folks. That this Thursday, the Skyline President's Breakfast is happening. Um, at their beautiful Farrelon's Room. Um, at seven thirty AM in the morning, bright and early. Uh, but this really supports the Skyline students. Um, many who do live in Daly City and surrounding areas, such as San Bruno and South San Francisco. Um, and then um, DCPLA's uh, St. Patrick's Annual Luncheon is also this upcoming Thursday. Um, and so um, I think that uh, if you are able to support. A DCPLA, they have definitely um, been um, an uh, anchor in our community. Um, in supporting our libraries and the programs for our libraries. Um, and then also um, with San Mateo County Health. Um, there will be um, a vaccine clinic on Wednesday, March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-third. From one to four PM at our Second Home Family Resource Center. Um, at seven-two-five Price Street in um, Daly City. Um, and you know, it's uh, the eligibility starts at six months old. But appointments are preferred, but walk-ins are okay. Um, and you know, it's really um, important to um, get uh, vaccinated whether it is. The flu, flu or COVID. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Manella. Go ahead, Mr. DeGiovanni.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to report that um, it was a great day. We went to, we're at the Bay Shore School. They had a great reading opportunity and I know that our police department participated. And also I see the people from Recreation and Library, Shayla, Denise and everyone that participated. Our fire, fire department participated. Um, it was a great day. Um, I was lucky enough to have the third and fourth-year-old, um, the little ones. And uh, also Nancy McGee was there and several people going in and out. Taking time to read books with these children is a, the best experience ever. And um, I want to thank the Board of Trustees, Vaupuah, Rick. And all the Board of Trustees, the Superintendent and all our city that showed up. And um, it was a great day, I think, when we were able to, to read to the little ones. I thought it was great. And the other thing I would just wanted to report, I wanted to thank Public Works, our City Manager. And Wastewater and those that responded to the emergencies and continue to do so. On, and our police officers, police department and firefighters. Because the, I guess this is gonna be like off and on. It seems like a regular thing now. And over the weekend, even you guys respond. And even on a Sunday when we had an elder that I texted uh, Mr. Picalotti. Who went in touch with Joshua because the, the man needed oxygen. Um, it got taken care of, because that's what we do in Daly City. I want people to know that, that. They do take action and they care and they will do whatever they can. They will push and get your lights turned back on. And find out why and make sure it's done. So I want to personally thank Joshua and our City Manager for the elders especially. They wanted me to convey their thanks to our police officers as well and fire department and everyone. I would like to ask that, I don't know in our city, I know that in South City and other places. That how many AEDs we have at our recreational facilities? And if not, I know we have a lot of sports enthusiasts, like even at the Geller Park and other places. And want to know if it's viable or do we put this on our budget request? Um, I know that being a coach and um, as you are, Mr. Picalotti. That I'm not sure if we have our AEDs and if so, would we be okay to? Look into that and make sure we have them at all our public facilities?
Through the chair?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Picalotti.
Staff has already uh, formed a committee. And we're looking into the, the needs, where we would need to have them at, at a minimum and the cost. So there's. For a couple of months, Assistant to the City Manager, uh, Leilani Ramos has been heading. A committee that we've been looking into it, so thank you.
Cause yeah, you're right on the same thing, because every minute counts and, you know, I don't know. I think we can get some grants as well. I know South City got grants. As well for their facilities, so.
All right.
But thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, any other City Council Reports?
I have one. Go ahead, Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, it's been quite some time, but I think uh. We have to uh, I have to make a report and finally get this information out. I'm part of the San Mateo Mosquito and Vector Control District and I wanted to report the following. Uh, the budget was just completed and at the end of the fiscal year, they had a fund balance of nine million five hundred sixteen dollars. Of which five hundred and eighty thousand was over-budgeted. In other words, they didn't expect to get an extra five hundred and eighty thousand. And that was as a result of excess ERAF that came into the district. As you well uh, may know that Daly City also included has money. With the San Mateo County Treasurer's Office in an investment pool. And given the current rise in interest rates and how things remain dynamic and fluid. The uh, Mosquito District decided to move some of their reserves. To try out an organization which is uh, approved by the California Special District Association. You, you cannot just move funds into any financial institution. It has to be basically a government institution and has to be approved. Well, the district has approximately two point five million dollars in reserves with the San Mateo County Treasurer. So it was decided to move to an organization called uh, Cal Class. Uh, or Cal Trust, the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to start. The differences between that, and there are many, and hopefully our city would consider it, uh, consider it as well. Your money that you move over is not subject to term or minimum terms and it's completely liquid. It's a liquid asset where you can take it out at any time with no penalties. So that's what the district is looking into. In the area of lab activities, uh, they're conducting tick surveillance for the water year twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. And as I look at the chart, uh, looks like uh, Berlay, Murray Ranch in Half Moon Bay. They've put out approximately two hundred and seventy-two traps. I don't see any listed here in Daly City. I see Belmont at two hundred and seventy traps. Edgewood County Park, eighty-four traps and, and so forth. With these traps are put out, uh, these uh, sheets of white flannel over vegetation. It's a technique called flagging. And after a while, they are tested for the presence of Borrelia Borgdaphery. Which is a causative agent of Lyme disease. So I'll keep you posted on that. Uh, two more issues. Uh, we should all be aware and uh, I think Daly City went through this before with our computer system. Ransomware is on the rise. So be uh, very cognizant. It's there and I'm sure our city's taking steps to prevent. Uh, some takeover of our systems like off-site backups and uh, redundant backups and et cetera. The last issue I wanted to report is on is that the district is also considering, there was a recommendation that came up. Into greening their fleet of vehicles. We do have a turnover of vehicles. It was recommended that we look into hybrids. And also EVs because we just acquired another piece of property. And part of the needs assessment was to put infrastructure level-two charging at that location. But if you put it in, you have to be able and have the vehicles to use them. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sylvester. Any other City Council Reports? Hearing none, how about a staff report?
Through the chair, just real brief. Um, with the predicted storm, heavy rain and winds. Um, all the departments, the front-facing departments are, and health and safety departments are uh, staffing up for tonight into tomorrow. So just wanted to make the council aware of that. Yeah, uh, on our, well, on our, uh, we've put it out on social media that we will be suspending street sweeping tomorrow and Wednesday.
All right, thank you.
As a result.
Great.
Now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Make a comment.
Yes.
On the staff report. Uh, before we move on, I want to, uh, Mr. Picalotti, uh, show kudos and provide kudos to your staff, especially Ms. Leilani Ramos. I'm constantly getting these texts of information that's constantly been, being put up onto our website and social media. Whether they pertain to street cleaning, whether they pertain to uh, weather advisory. Um, and, and et cetera. So I just wanted to say a job well done. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Any other reports? All right, hearing none. We're now at the adjournment in memory. I didn't get an adjourn in memory list, but I'd like us to adjourn in memory of. Frances Kendra Chan Lucero, a twenty-seven, twenty-seven-year-old. Uh, woman who was shot and killed uh, last Monday here in Daly City. She was the victim, according to media reports, of domestic violence. So we'd like to adjourn in memory of her. Any other adjourn in memories? Now, let's take a moment of silence to adjourn in him, her memory. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
On favor, say aye.
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 This memory is adjourned. Thank you.